Budget presentation with Mrs. Feldman.
I'm going to take my mask off because I don't want anyone to miss any of this riveting conversation. So tonight, we're going to talk about state aid in the New York State tax cap. And at the end of the presentation, I'm going to ask the board members to make a decision for me on what to put in for our preliminary submission of the tax cap to New York State. So we're going to start talking about state aid categories. We're going to talk about foundation aid, expense-driven aids, excess cost aids, and building aid. So foundation aid was enacted in 2007 or eight as a result of an lawsuit, and it was unrestricted aid to be used at the Board of Education's discretion and was to be phased in in future years to promote equality to all students in the state, regardless of the economic conditions of the district they lived in. The phasing was halted in 2008 as a result of the economic downturn. And then in 2022, as a result of another lawsuit, Governor Hochul has announced that she plans to fully implement the foundation aid in the 2022-23 school year and the 23-24 school year. So any districts that were not fully aided will get half in 22-23 and the other half of what they are due in 23-24. And so for Eden, that we will get 402,000, excuse me a moment, I need to get rid of this grid because I'm afraid it's in your way. There we go, $402,853 in additional foundation aid, which is, as I said, unrestricted aid. This is very good news for our district. Typically, we don't get any increases in foundation aid, any knowledge of them, until the legislative run on March 31st. So our expense-driven aids, our aids form items, specific items that we purchased in the prior year. And then based on a formula that combines our wealth and our student enrollment to tell how much they will reimburse us for the state. The Board of Cooperative Educational Services that we know of as the acronym BOSI's, that is a category aid for expense-driven aids. In 2019-2020, we got 1.3 million. In 2021, we got a little over a million. In 21-22, we got 1.1 million. And the governor said we're going to get 1.2 million this year based on what we spent in the 21-22 school year or have signed up to spend. Hardware and technology is a expense-driven aid where they give us a certain dollar amount per student. So the next two categories of aids are based on student enrollment. So in 2019-20, we had $21,679. And you come forward to the 22-23, you can see there's ups and downs due to enrollment, and we're expected to get $20,972 in the 22-23 school year. Software, library, and textbook aids, again, they're a dollar per student enrolled. And in 2019-20, we got $109,877. And you can see then 2021, our enrollment was different. So we've got $109,104. In 21-22, we've got $105,251. And in 22-23, we're projected to get $104,838. Transportation aid, and I want to talk a little bit about what is in transportation aid. It's the fuel to run the buses. It's the actual, we get paid back for the purchase of the buses. It's the staff in the bus garage. It's the insurance on the buses. We spent in 1920, 1.4 million. In 2021, or we received in 2021, we received 1.42 million. See, it was down a little, and that was due to the pandemic. You see it bounce right back up in 21-22 when we're in school full-time, 1.5 million. And we're slated for 1.8 million in the governor's runs. So for our transportation, we receive 72.9 cents on every dollar we spend, we receive back in aid. So our total service aids have gone from 2.8 million to 2.6 million, back up to 2.8 and to 3.2 million in the projection for the 22-23 school year. Access cost aid, this is the reimbursement for extraordinary need costs incurred for our special education students. We get high access cost aids if they go to a public school. A public school could be Eden. It could be that we've sent them over to BOSI's. It could be that there's a program at another school that we send them to. Private access cost aid is for the non-for-profits, places like Summit, places like Aspire of Western New York. And we're required by law to send the students to the least restrictive environment to enhance their educational opportunities, to give them the best education possible. So our high access cost aid in 1920 was at 300,000. In 2021 was 216,000. 21-22 was 299,000. And it's going down in 22-23 to 191,000. It simply means we have less students placed in 2021 in public schools for special education. Our private access cost aid, it's gone from 114,000 to 211,000 to 234,000 up to 235,000. Again, these are students that are placed in the non-for-profits, and they are placed in the least restrictive environment for their disability so they can achieve the best educational outcome possible. We have building aid. Building aid is the state aid reimbursement over 15 years for our capital improvements. The state is paying our mortgage payment and some of the interest. So 78.2 cents of every dollar that we spend is eligible for the aid, comes back to us over those 15 years. So in 1920, we had 2,487,69. In 2021, 2,094,038. 21-22 was 2,138,55. And in the governor's runs, we're projected to have 1,605,516. That's because we've had some aid drop off and we haven't had new aid come out. So our expenses have gone down some, but we've been fully paid for some of the projects that we did over 15 years ago. So where does this lead us? Overall, in 21-22, we actually are going to receive $13,136,708. Proposed on the governor's runs, we should receive $13,289,573, $152,865, or a 1.17% increase in our overall state aid projections. Now, we're going to talk about the property tax cap calculation. I apologize, this one is tedious and long, but I want to go through all the steps so people understand there's a lot involved to create the tax cap percentage, where it's not just a number and it's tied to many other factors. So it's due to the New York State Comptroller's Office on March 1st, 2022. What will be given is the actual calculation you're seeing here and the Board of Education's decision on whether or not they choose to exceed or remain at the tax cap level or below. The tax cap level simply has to be reported to the state comptroller so they can determine what our voter authorization is needed to have a positive outcome for our budget election in May. So we're going to talk about some of the terminology, the capital exclusions. We can talk more about the calculation and the tax levy threshold. So we have a tax growth factor. The tax base is the real property improvements that have occurred in our community. So they're not where I remodeled the kitchen. They are new additional structures. So for 22-23, that factor is .0073. So not a lot of new building going on in Eden. Allowable levy growth factor is provided by the New York State Comptroller's Office. The average index for the CPI was 4.7%. But this formula that has always been known as a 2% tax cap is because the number in this formula is maximized at 2%. So this year, at the state maximum, we're still 2.7% less than the Consumer Price Index, which is what is the inflation indicator. So there are payments in lieu of taxes, which we're not going to spend a lot of time on because we have none in Eden. But they would be negotiated by the Erie County Industrial Developmental Agency to bring on new companies' buildings over a 10-year period. Then there's an available carryover from prior years. And for Eden, we have $43,792 available to use in the formula this year. The 2021-22 exclusion amount for capital, which is our mortgage payments and it's the local share, was $133,797. The 22-23 capital exclusion is zero. It means that we are receiving more state aid for our bond payments, our mortgage payments than what we're paying out. So here's the formula all put together. You have the tax growth factor of .0073, and you multiply that times $15,164,827 to come up with that $15,275,530. To that, you add any prior year pilots, which we have none. Any torts or judgments, and those who've been in lawsuits against us that we are expected to have to pay, we have none at this time. 21-22 local capital exclusion from last year is subtracted from that number, $133,797. It leaves us with an adjusted prior year levy of $15,141,733. We then take that, $15,141,733, and we multiply it by the 2% to get $15,444,568. We have no pilots again, so that's number zero. We have an available carryover of $43,792 in our tax levying limit before exemptions of $15,488,360. Now, we're going to talk about exemptions. There are torts and judgments, which we already discussed, where losses that we have none. If the employee retirement system percentage that we are mandated to pay on salaries goes up more than 2%, there would be a number there, but it did not go up more than 2% this year. The same thing for the teachers' retirement system. There is no exemption because it did not raise 2% in the contribution factor from last year. And then we have no capital levy limit or levy share, so we have no exclusions for the 22-23 tax cap calculation. So our total levy threshold will be $15,488,360. The allowable increase in dollars is $323,533, or 2.13% of our tax levy from last year. So here we are to the part where the Board of Education has to make a decision. Do they plan to override the tax cap for the year-ending June 30th, 2023 levy? In other words, do you plan to levy 2.13 or less? If you're going to go less, then I will put a no, you do not plan to exceed the cap. And then we will be subject to the 50% plus one for a positive vote. And if we go up to the, and we try to exceed the yes, then it's 67% vote. And this is the point where I'm asking questions of the board, and your turn to discuss.
So Laura, can you go back to the .0073? Back even further than that? So the community growth, that's our total levy growth, not just Eden, but Boston and Concord and?
Assess value.
Assess value. So it's the assessed value, that's what the total growth was?
Yes, not for something that would have been risen, but for something that was new construction, whether it be in Evans, whether it be in Eden, Boston, or Concord, or some of?
So it looks at the school district as a whole, just not Eden?
Correct.
Okay. All right, discussion on, do we exceed the 2.13? Do we plan to stay at 2.13 or less?
Yeah, I see no reason to go over the 2.13. I think we can find a way to make it work. COVID is certainly still affecting certain businesses in town and certain people in town. And so it would be, would not be a prudent decision to exceed that. We'll just have to find a way to make it work, that's my opinion.
I agree a hundred percent. I agree it's not the time to try and go over the cap.
I agree too. I think it would be a tough sell, especially the way the economy is right now, to ask for more money. I don't think we would get that 60% or whatever we need to pass this budget. So I think we should stay under.
Yeah, everyone's suffering from the inflation and everything's high. It's the wrong time to do that.
Laura, can you go to the slide, go back a couple? Capital exclusions. Do we have capital exclusions coming on in the next couple of years with the upcoming capital projects?
Yes, we will have. We will have some of our payments will fall off, and then we will have our new payments for the new project once we finalize and go to bonding. And in between, we'll have it for the bands.
Okay.
Along with our bus purchases are included in that number. And our BOSI's, any of their capital costs, if they went out for a project or they, and this year, they did an energy performance grant, and we have to pay our portion of that back to them. All those things factor in.
Okay. Any other discussion on? I think we're all in favor of going out at 2.13% or lower.
All right, I'll make sure that I record that when I do my submission to the state comptroller.
So we will not be exceeding that, the tax cap?
Correct.
But?
And if circumstances should change, we could adjust, but I wouldn't recommend it at this time. So here's our remaining budget calendar, and I just put it in here rather than you read it all off. Our next meeting is March 16th. There will be a budget workshop on March 22nd. So those are the next two things coming, and thank you for listening.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Now we have the GLP budget with Mrs. Carter. Or did you want to do Mrs. LaRosa first? It's fine.
Whatever order works for you. We know who you are.
Hello, I'm here to present the elementary budget and the curriculum and instruction budget for next year and kind of talk about our initiatives that we have going on. We have a pretty full plate for next year. Some of these things were started pre-pandemic, and now they are being brought back to the forefront now that we're hopefully phasing away from the pandemic a little bit. So New York State, a few years ago, rolled, announced that ELA, Mass Science and Social Studies, we were phasing out Common Core standards, and now we're following the next generation standards. So we need to be providing materials and training for teachers district-wide to support that. We started on working on that right before the pandemic, but officially starting in September, we are next-gen standards across the district. Additionally, PE standards, art, and music have new standards coming out right behind those ones. We want to continue our Kagan Initiative, which we started right before the pandemic, and that is to support student engagement across every class, pre-K through 12, to help students work on their collaboration and communication skills and make sure they're active learners in whatever curriculum they're engaged in. We want to provide new training for our new math program that is aligned with the next-generation standards. I will talk about that more in depth in a minute. And we are launching an MTSS initiative, which requires training from, to our teachers across the district. And we've been doing response to intervention for quite a few years, and we're going to be expanding that view to make sure we're encompassing and looking at the whole child, not just academically, but behavior supports, social, emotional, work supports, mental health supports, and doing that in a systematic manner, pre-K through 12. So that is a whole lot of training on top of our mandated training that we have to do every year. So we approach this in quite a few ways. Our department chairs attend BOSI's forums, and then they bring that information back to their departments, which comes right from state ed. We have teachers attend community of practice in the pre-K through five level. Our teachers come back and share that at staff development and faculty meetings. We plan our superintendent's conference and professional development days in conjunction using our BOSI's cosers, and we have BOSI's presenters come in. We have our Kagan presenters come in on those days, so we do contract with specific trainers. And we use our in-house experts. So we use a very wide approach to attack all the different staff development that has to happen. Our major initiative, pre-K through five, or K through five, I'm sorry, is our new math program. So a few years ago, the state announced they were shifting away from Common Core. And right around the same time, we found out our gold math program was no longer going to be supported by Hope Niflin. They were going to be phasing that program out. So I asked for volunteer teachers who would like to pilot curriculum so we can compare what's on the market. We used edworks.org to, they evaluate different curriculums, they're curriculum experts, and they evaluated on multiple measures. And there's so much out there, you don't even know where to start. So we looked for things that were getting top ratings in that area, and we narrowed it down to iReady Math and Intermath. So they're from two different publishers, and we had volunteer teachers serve on the committee. They received training, the materials, they were able to try out the programs for several months. We met as a group. We use a research-based rubric in-house to evaluate that. And it was a very easy decision. The Ready Math stood out, heads and shoulders above the other one. So we need to provide training and materials for the teachers around that. The program itself is very exciting and has three major components that are a bit different than what we're doing now. So you have a benchmark assessment, but that provides super detailed information on each student of what standard they're proficient in or what they might need extra work in. We have your core curriculum that really helps the teacher facilitate really good math discussion beyond memorization so they can become expert in math and have true math discourse. And then it provides the children off that benchmark a personalized learning path online. So it supports our technology initiative and our personalized learning initiative. So they're working on math, they're working on grade level standards, but they're also working on individual lessons that help them fill the gap. So they are proficient in math. So that is kind of what's going on in the curriculum and instruction and professional development side. Would you want to go, you want me to go right to? Okay, so before we go to GLP, I will talk about specific initiatives to the elementary building. So across our classrooms, we are going to be working on making sure we have materials and supplies for the new learning standards and completing that process. We've been implementing our, this is our first year with our Amplify Science program, and that is going very well. We need to replenish those kits. I am requesting an AIS teacher part-time. With the pandemic, we have noticed some children are right on grade level, if not above grade level, but we have more than usual gaps in learning in ELA and math so we could use a little bit more specialized support in that area temporarily. We're going to continue our Kagan Initiative across our classroom. We're having training on this March staff day. Teachers are getting day two in Kagan so they can implement those strategies. We're continuing with our second step program. Our social worker and school counselor implement that with whole group lessons to help children grow emotionally. And we are going to continue our replacement program for our equipment and get more flexible seating into our classrooms, such as standing desks, wobble stools, places where children can stretch out and work out on the floor. So hopefully, as the pandemic phases out, we're going to be able to bring all that great things back into action. Any questions?
I have a quick question. I just, I didn't know, I almost wanted to hear what Lauren had to say first, but I'll ask quickly because maybe she would have answered my question. But anyways, with the AIS cap, are you looking for a part-time ELA and a part-time math?
Or? I think I can make it work with one part-time person, and they, and then we can flex that person depending on need. If the need is more in math or more in ELA.
Okay, I didn't know if you were looking for a part-time here, part-time at GLP or no?
The part-time would just be, I'm asking for, just for this building right now.
Okay.
On this slide.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. LaRosa.
Thank you.
Mrs. Carter, hello, how are you? Now, as a Board of Education, you're going to see a lot of consistency. So I'm going to try not to repeat what Kelly said, but you certainly, as a K-5 program, would want to see consistency. So with the GLP, our focus would be, of course, those new learning standards and incorporating a focus that has the teachers getting obviously trained on those and incorporating programs that support that. We certainly want to make sure that we are supporting an ability to close the gaps in the learning we see, particularly with COVID. And we're supporting the Kagan Initiative, which certainly helps our students, even at a young age, have the ability to collaborate through discussion and engagement support. Oh, thank you so much. You're such a great support. We also are focusing on continued technology. We use it in a much different way than we did, obviously, when we were in remote instruction. So we pick very focused times when our children are using it and really picking direct curricular materials that support the technology that we use. But I can certainly say teachers have, the positive of COVID is that they're using it in a way that keeps them all very streamlined and paced together. They have great foundational planning that they do as grade levels, if they're able to share with students, if they are remote because of COVID, if they are remote because they're on vacation or those kinds of things. So that was a positive that came out of COVID and the use of technology. They're able to definitely streamline things with their students. And as a grade level as a whole, the pacing is great. We are going to continue to bring in instructional materials for not only the additional staff we have. So we added a .5 special ed teacher this year, making sure they have what they need. We have an additional psychologist who's working with us, so that is a focus. But we're also making sure that our instructional materials through our ERLA program and our ERLA books are up to date. Our manipulatives for our concrete instruction for our primary students are all up to par. We're providing differentiated materials for direct instruction to reteach and enrich our students. So at GLP, we do almost no whole group instruction. In order to do that, we need, you often need more materials than you would need if you were doing whole groups. Small group requires. Small group requires a lot of differentiated leveled materials for students. So we have a huge focus on that. You heard Mrs. LaRosa talk about the social emotional curriculum that we use with our counselors. We will continue with that. We are seeing a huge increase in mental health issues with our students. So that program has been key to giving them a consistent pre K through five language, set of skills to use on their day-to-day dealings with just things that are popping up for them. And at GLP, to answer your question, we did put a request in for some AIS help also. Ours is a little different. Ours has a math focus for sure. So we, because we hire academic intervention service teachers, they can definitely fit a math or reading role as opposed to when you think of remedial reading teachers where they were reading certified, they have to be elementary certified. We're looking for a math focused because even prior to COVID, we are trying to get into our RTI compliance of supporting our kids in, in math. And we are definitely short. And now with the gaps of COVID, we're seeing it even more. So we're looking at a part-time math teacher. And that could even be combined, we have a part-time special ed teacher. So we're looking at some creative ways of combining that. We also are working on our continued replacement cycle in addition to flexible seating. So what we know is students really find different ways that they independently learn. So some stand, some sit, some wiggle. So we have lots of different flexible seating options for them and meet them where they are at. We are excitedly waiting to start the Kaboom Room at GLP. So you know, we received a grant for our Kaboom Room. We know that active and fit kids support brain function and particularly in the winter when they can't get outside and continue to be active, we can't open it right now because of the social distancing, but as soon as we can, it'll certainly be up and running. We have the foundation built and ready to go. And we just want to make sure that we can, within our budget, support some of the extra items that we will be incorporating, like balance beams and things like that. And our big initiative, we want to focus on next year is we are exploring a full day pre kindergarten option. We have for my entire time in Eden, which I'm not going to say how long that has been. We have had a half day pre K. I came, we had one half day pre K. We went up to four at one point, we are down to three. But I can tell you in my very long history here, one of the biggest inhibitors for parents is it's half day. How do you, as a working parent, get your child there and back? We do bus one way, which we didn't in the beginning when I came here. So that was a huge miracle for parents, but there's still one way of transportation. And it's difficult for parents. So we are exploring the option for that. We're looking into some grant funding. Our program is a UPK program, so it's universal pre K. It is grant funded. So I've reached out to the state to see if they're looking to provide expansion dollars and grant funding for that. I have not gotten any information yet at the state level, but in the past, they have offered a grant. So we'll see how we do with that. I will certainly apply for the grant if it's available. If we do, if we take our three half-day programs and make them three full day, that would be extending our current enrollment and making them full day. If we took that and did some kind of a hybrid model where we possibly had two full day and then one of them kept to half day, that's the same amount of staffing, but you would add another 18 children who could be serviced. So you would increase enrollment. So there's also some varied models we could look at within that program. We did do a survey and asked parents who are currently looking to enroll in pre K because we're during, we are in pre K registration time right now. We have about an 85% who filled out the survey who would prefer full-time. That does not shock me. I can tell you that in the past, we've always, you know, looked at the community as a whole to look at, you know, are you interested in full day? And what would be the impact on the community? 19 years ago. So there's my number. You know, there were a lot more community daycares and places where children went. I think there's just been a shift in a lot of different things. So if we were able to make this happen, it would definitely be an increase in instructional time academically and socially emotionally. Those are positives for children. They're coming to us and they're not necessarily ready for kindergarten. They have a lot of skills that they need to build, just social, emotional, you know, and COVID has really brought that to light. How do you have that opportunity to learn social skills? Play with your peers, learn from your peers, talk to adults, talk to other children. It's no shocker for people that children are really struggling with that now. They were contained in their homes. So could we close that gap quicker for them? And then for the future, it's a great opportunity for children. If, depending on what model we pick, we could have an increase in enrollment. So right now we bring approximately 100 kindergarteners in at GLP. 54 of them are part of our pre K program. There is a significant difference often in kids who spend pre K with us that come to us in kindergarten. So the more we could have with us, the better off they will be at the kindergarten level. It definitely will provide support to families and assistance with childcare because obviously pre K, there's no charge for pre K. If you're paying for daycare right now and you could send your child, child all day to pre K, that has a huge financial impact to a family. If we can transport them in the morning and then in the afternoon, that eliminates that, what do I do midday? Because we have grandparents, we have car pools, we have aunts and uncles. It, I do have children who drop out of our pre K program because the stress of that transportation is a really big deal for a family. And the educational foundation is just, I could go on and on about that. In order to do that, we would certainly have to hire one and a half pre K teachers. We would have to hire one and a half teacher aides. Those are requirements under the grant. Those are requirements for every 18 children. You have to have a teacher and an aide. In addition, if I'm bringing full-time teachers on, I have to provide teachers certain contractual obligations. So we talked about possibly giving our children physical education. Again, I'm going to go back to the Kaboom Room. If children are fit and active, they learn better. So what better to give them is physical activity with a physical education teacher who could not only give them formal physical education, and I know Cheryl's up there going, yeah, absolutely. They also could give them supervised recess because what do children need? They need playtime. They haven't had it probably in two years. They aren't playing with their peers. The things they learn from play is astounding. There would be an increase in supplies and materials. In a UPK program, you are required to give them a snack. What would be different about this is they would be able to go to lunch, but we still would give them a snack. And again, we have had a tremendous outpouring of the people who did do the survey, who either would prefer full day, which does not shock me, or a few that didn't have a preference. Right now, I think we had two people who right now said they would prefer half day. So that would be, we're in the exploration of that right now and getting the numbers on that. But that would be a big focus for GLP next year.
I know. I have a coworker that has a son in the Holland School District that goes to an all-day universal pre K. And she can't speak enough about what a great asset it's been for her to be able to, and you know, some people say, oh, you know, he's on the bus, he's gone all day. But she says she sees nothing but positive things out of it.
It's definitely, the, the transportation itself is really hard. I mean, I think back to when my kids were in a preschool, you know, they had to get picked up in the afternoon and I had to have my mother do it. I was in a classroom at the time. And if you don't have that, what do you do?
Mrs. Carter, is there a chance we may not, I mean, if we get, you know, 85% would prefer full day. Is there a chance we may not offer a half a day? Or?
So I think it really, you know, there's so many unknowns. What kind of funding can we get? What kind of funding can we provide? You know, what's our ultimate goal? Is our ultimate goal only full day or is our ultimate full day and increase enrollment? Because if we offered the hybrid of two full days and two half days, that's the same amount of staffing. And then we have an option for people to say, say what they want, no different than the AM PM class. If I have more people who want something than spots I have, I do a lottery. So it's really what our end goal is, to be honest with you, and how it's funded and what funding we have. Either did I answer your question?
Yeah. Anything else? Thank you.
Have a good night. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have any requests with dress specific items from the consent agenda? Okay. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, consensus items be approved.
Any discussion?
Second.
Any discussion?
What do these consent items include?
A through B through B.
Does that include what you and I have discussed?
Yes.
So my understanding with that is that there would be a review of that next year. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
We're under public comment. This is the approximate position in time that the board has designated to receive statements from individuals and groups. The board will review all statements, then respond appropriately at a future meeting. All persons in attendance are required to sign the attendance sheet and designate their representation status. For example, parent, teacher, bus driver, chamber pemper, et cetera. There is a two-minute time limit. Anybody?
Anybody? Any of the students? No questions about participation in government? Are we sure?
Going, going, gone. Okay.
It will be on your Kaboom test tomorrow. Just let you know.
Okay, thank you. On to new business resignations. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation for the purpose of retirement of payroll clerk Patricia Hawkins be accepted effective April 30th, 2022. The board and administration wish to thank Mrs. Hawkins for her 33 years of service to the district. Note, Mrs. Hawkins' last day of employment will be April 29th, 2022.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just want to say congratulations to her, but Pat has been the most wonderful person to work with. If you ever had any questions regarding your insurance or payroll or whatever, she was more than happy. No question was stupid. She was wonderful. She's going to be greatly missed. But you know, good for her. So I'm happy for her.
I just want to say, it has been my pleasure to work with Pat. She's the finest payroll clerk I've ever worked with. She will be walking out of this district not only as a retiree, but with 33 years of our history going with her. So she will be greatly missed and I wish her nothing but the best in her retirement.
And she was always the most popular person on the first day of school because she knew when the first payday was. So we always liked to give her.
And she was very dedicated.
Oh my gosh. Oh, she never took time off.
No, she would, she would not take a day off when, when it was that time to process. So.
Yeah, yeah. She was, she's wonderful and well-deserved retirement. I hope she enjoys it.
All right. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation of hall monitor David Russo be accepted effective February 2nd, 2022.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing her probationary period, Natalie Eggleston be granted permanent status as a teacher aide effective February 28th, 2022.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing his probationary period, Brandon Watson be granted permanent status as a director of technology and communication services effective February 28th, 2022.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
And upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing her probationary period, Lisa Postill be permanently appointed as a senior clerk stenography, stenographer effective February 28th, 2022.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing her probationary period, Amanda Pachuchinsky be permanently appointed as a clerk typist effective February 28th, 2022.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully, successfully completing her probationary period, Tracy Brown be permanently appointed as a clerk typist effective March 8th, 2022.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing her probationary period, Deborah Holsher be permanently appointed as a bus attendant effective February 28th, 2022.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing her probationary period, Diane Strong be permanently appointed as a bus attendant effective February 28th, 2022.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Brianna McCabe be appointed on probation as a bus attendant effective February 17th, 2022 and ending October 16th, 2022. Salary is based upon CSEA contract level four, step one.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Nicholas Pearson be appointed on probation as a cleaner effective February 17th, 2022 through August 16th, 2022. Salary is based upon, upon CSEA contract level two, step one.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Ashley Moscato be appointed as a temporary psychologist up to 10 hours per week effective February 17th, 2022 through June 30th, 2022. Salary is $3 per hour.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just a bit of an explanation for the board. As you're aware, we've been working diligently at helping our psychologists get caught up with some of the testing that we are behind in. And credit to Mary Maxson for this creative solution to helping our two established psychologists get caught up and make sure we're in line with the expectations of special education rules and laws.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
Okay, business report.
Well, I just have one thing for you tonight. We received notice today that tomorrow we will be getting in our bank account the balance of the final property tax collection from Erie County. So what happens with the tax bill is if you don't pay your tax bill in the school tax collection period, it's remitted to the county. The county makes us whole, whether or not they have collected the funds from the individual taxpayer because they have the authority to seize property and school districts do not. So they are mandated by law to make us whole. So our check will be coming into our account tomorrow, approximately $206,000.
Thank you. Superintendent's report.
Okay, first off, thank you, Mrs. Feldman, Mrs. LaRosa, Mrs. Carter, for your presentations this evening. Appreciate your professionalism and the time that you put into bringing that information forward. Kelly and Lauren, thank you for your presentation. And Kelly, in addition to your presentation on curriculum, I think you've given the board a really good snapshot of some of our priorities next year. I held off on making this comment earlier because I knew I would have the mic, but the board will recall that I talk a lot about pyramids of support when it comes to students. And I have to say that the earliest intervention is really the base of that pyramid. So I look forward to working with you on that grant and let's, let's talk again tomorrow. I might have some resources that you don't at State Ed, or at least I know people that do. And then we will have to make a decision, the board will have to make a decision as the governing body, whether we move forward with that plan regardless of the grant or not. whether we move forward with that plan regardless of the grant or not, correct? Because it is critically important. The idea to expand enrollment and give children a better learning opportunity early on, I think, is, is really what, what Eden's about. So thank you for your work thus far on that. Moving on, the board, and also it's on the public part of our agenda, does have a draft copy, my first draft copy, our first draft copy of the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three school calendar. I do hope to have a final draft for the board's consideration at the March meeting. I thought it was important, however, to share a probable or a potential calendar with our community as we're starting to get calls for, with questions about when school's going to start, when breaks are going to be, and so on and so forth. Our calendar, the Eden calendar that you have before you, does some, does have some slight differences from the Western New York regional calendar. The differences are mainly in the day that school starts, as well as the length of some of the recesses. It's important to understand that each district has its own individual constraints and requirements, which makes the pure adoption of the regional calendar difficult at times. And we certainly have those issues here as well, which is fine. It's important, though, that we come as close as possible to that regional calendar, because every one of those students that we heard about a few weeks ago that attends a CTE class, a BOSI's class, or maybe a specialized education class, their, their calendar is based on the regional calendar. So each day that we deviate impacts their education a little bit. So that's why it's important to be as close as possible within our own local constraints. Any questions about the calendar, or any concerns at this point? I know that Mrs. LaRosa and I have talked, and as you heard, we have a number of very, very important instructional initiatives next year. And so we're going to have to be really creative with making sure our teaching staff has the right professional development opportunities, be it Kagan or new math program or MTSS. We have a lot of different things going on that really are all designed, again, as part of that pyramid of support. Okay? Moving on with the capital project update, I'm happy to tell you that we remain on schedule. Currently, our project is out for bid. That means contractors are examining the details of the project and preparing to bid their services. This is a very exciting time, and fingers crossed, in any superstitions that you have, you should perform on a daily basis, because our bid opening is scheduled for March tenth at two PM in this auditorium. Very exciting time for our district, and let's hope that we get some really good solid bids, and we can go forward with all the projects that we have, have in place. Also, in, as part of my board report, I want to talk about occasional driver. This came up a couple of times, and I actually had a board member ask a question maybe a week or so ago, which really lit a fire under me. We have these two wonderful Suburbans that the district purchased that don't seem to move very often. And, and they do, they're utilized, and they're important for the district to have them. But there's, there's more opportunities out there that we haven't necessarily taken advantage of, because we needed to, I don't want to say re-adopt, but maybe we needed to modify our process for what's called an occasional driver. And there's board policy that, that talks about what occasional driver is and isn't. And an occasional driver is not a bus driver. It's someone that drives occasionally and, and drives a regular vehicle, like a Suburban. So with Mrs. Feldman's assistance and the advice of Board Council and our insurance carrier, we've established a bit of a change in procedure for occasional drivers. So in addition to constraints of the policy, occasional drivers will need to provide a copy of their license, three references, and proof that they're physically able to safely drive a motor vehicle. With this procedure, we can allow those who qualify to utilize the district Suburban, Suburbans for transportation to away events, such as a state or regional championship where a small number of students are attending. Maybe a week or so ago, we had a regional championship, and this process wasn't in place yet, and parents were required to drive their, drive their children. And this, and you'll hear a little bit later that, that we had some great success at that tournament. So the, one of the coaches will now be able to utilize a Suburban to transport the students, okay? Any questions about that? All right. COVID update. We should know later this week if the school mask mandate will be extended through early March. If it is, which is likely, the governor has indicated the decision on school mandates will be made shortly after our staff and students return from the mid-winter recess. We will be distributing test kits to those families who request one this coming Friday, as per the governor's directive. The idea is that students will be able to test before they return to school, and then again, three days after they return, to ensure that we continue to keep our schools safe, places to learn and work. As I stated in a correspondence sent to the community earlier this week, there's no obligation to receive a test kit, nor is there an obligation to use a test kit if one is received. It's just yet another service the district is providing to the community. I do have very good news to share regarding the drastic improvement in our student infection rate and the subsequent improvement in overall attendance. I just want to share some pretty remarkable data for you. And I'm going to share this by school. So the month of January at GLP, we had fifteen students who were reported as positive for COVID. And the month of February thus far, we have five. I can tell you, all five of those positives were in the first two, two days of the month. We've had none since. Eden Elementary, in the month of January, we had thirty-four positive students. In the month of February, we have two. The middle school, high school, we had a hundred and five students who were positive for COVID. In the month of February, we have four. So our in-district tolls, just for students, we're a hundred and fifty-four in January, and we are at eleven in February. Pretty remarkable. As a result of those improvements, our attendance rate is back to where it is normally, at about the ninety-five percent attendance rate. We were as low as the mid-to-mid-to-low eighties at times in January. I didn't, I don't have the statistics for you in terms of our staff rate, but that is, that's been outstanding as well. So very happy with that. You know that we embarked on a test-of-state program, I think about a month ago. During that time, we had twenty-three students who participated in the program with only one testing positive. Fantastic numbers as well. Currently, we have no students participating nor eligible to participate in the test-of-state program, which is a testament to the health and safety of our, of our students at school. So what this means is our district is ready to move forward with changes to the mitigation strategies once the governor gives the go-ahead. Does not mean, however, that we are done with the pandemic, but rather, it's time to try new strategies, or rather, time to see how our staff and students fare with the lessening of some restrictions. At some point, we're going to have to try. I do want to say, while some will applaud this stance, we do still have families, students, and staff members who are concerned about the virus and may experience new levels of anxiety when the mask mandates are lifted. Our staff has been reminded that we need to meet each individual where they are personally, and to help them move forward, just as we did with those families and students who were mask-averse during the pandemic. As a community, we need to continue to work together and work through our differences, and most importantly, to continue to be respectful of each other and respectful of those individual differences as well. Any questions about COVID? Having none, thank you. So I have to tell you, I cannot believe that we are on the mid-winter recess already. As I said previously, each time the calendar turns and we remain in the in-person instructional model, I feel a bit victorious. I feel victorious for our students and our staff. And it's just, it's really been, been wonderful having the school year as near normal as possible. I want to wish our students and staff a wonderful restful break. Stay safe and healthy, and we will see you when you return. Any questions for me? Thank you.
All right, so student report, Jessica Zittle.
Winter sports are wrapping up. The Spring Musical back in the.
Jess, can you push your mic on?
Okay, winter sports are wrapping up. The Spring Musical Guys and Dolls is coming soon. Prom committees are working hard. The high school mock child team is two-and-oh, and Eden is seeded second for the playoffs. Bryce DeLaPenta, Shane Walzac, and Johnny Vaccaro are all going to states for wrestling. Connor Gleason was accepted into the Naval Academy. The holiday dance was canceled this winter due to low attendance. An outdoor movie night is upcoming, and through the food drive, one thousand five hundred twenty-eight pounds of food were donated. That's all.
That's wonderful. Thank you. Okay, board report, roundtable.
Anybody got anything? Just one thing on the capital project. We had a meeting earlier this month. And it was questionable whether we're going to be going out to bid here this month. But SED came through with our final approvals. And it's a good thing to get out on, on the street to see where we're going to be. We'll see what happens once the bids come in, and where we're going to stand in regards to the construction schedule and things on those lines. And I think we just need to be very flexible with, with the expectations of the capital project, especially this summer. I mean, we had a pretty lofty goal of Phase One-A. There may be some challenges to it with the supply chain, so. We'll find, we'll know more come March tenth with, with the bid openings, so. On track through what we needed to be, and, you know, it's kind of now in the contractor's hands, in the supply chain. That's all I have.
Okay, the next regular Board of Education meeting is Wednesday, March sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, at seven PM in the Eden Elementary School Auditorium. The board retreat is Monday, March fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, at seven PM in the district office conference room. Budget workshop, Tuesday, March twenty-second, twenty twenty-two, at seven PM in the Eden Elementary School Auditorium. The annual budget hearing is May third, twenty twenty-two, at seven PM in the Eden Elementary School Auditorium. Annual budget vote, Tuesday, May seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, nine AM through nine PM in the middle and high school auditorium foyer. And now, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education enter executive session to discuss contract negotiations with the ETA.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.